...two thousand and fourteen Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Do recognize we have a quorum, which is a small quorum, but we have a quorum. Like everybody's stand, we have the Father Steve Antis from Saint Mary's Catholic Church to do the invocation and remain standing for the pledge.
O Lord, our God, we bless you and praise you. As we come together for this meeting, we ask you in your kindness to fill us with the knowledge of your will, so that pleasing you in all things, we may grow in every good work. Lord, teach me to be generous. Teach me to serve you as you deserve. To give and not to count the cost. To fight and not to hit the wounds. To toil and not to seek for rest. To labor and not to seek for reward. Except that of knowing that I do your will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, I'd like to welcome everyone here this morning. I'm gonna change the agenda a little bit, go do some sports recognition resolutions. And I'll start with the first one, With County Board, With County Resolution fourteen, twenty fourteen dash oh three, resolution honoring the Royal Retreat High School Wrestling Team. Whereas the Royal Retreat High School Wrestling Team has completed their two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen season undefeated with an overall record of fourteen and oh. And whereas the Royal Retreat High School Wrestling Team was the one A West Sub Regional Champion, as well as the one A Western Region Champion. And whereas the Royal Retreat High School Wrestling Team advanced to the state championship tournament and won the Virginia High School League Group One A State Championship, attaining the first state wrestling championships in the school's history. And whereas wrestler Trey Boyd, a hundred and six pound weight class, Ty Boyd, a hundred and thirteen pound weight class, Jacob Nguyen, a hundred and twenty pound weight class, and Dakota Snyder, a hundred and forty-five pound weight class, were individual state champions in their respective weight classes. Whereas the wrestlers and coaches of the Royal Retreat High School Wrestling Team, through their outstanding display of athletic ability, team play, and sportsmanship, have reflected great credit upon the school and upon the entire county. And whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commend the Royal Retreat High School Wrestling Team consisting of Trey Boyd, Ty Boyd, Jacob Nguyen, Hunter Ward, Marshall Tyler, Trent O'Neal, Caleb Snyder, Josh Penel, Penuel, Dakota Snyder, Lathan Powell, William Montgomery, Jackson Sowers, Harley Mitchell, Chad Roush, and head coach Rick Boyd, and the entire staff for an outstanding twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen season record. Now therefore be it resolved that this resolution be presented to the Royal Retreat High School Wrestling Team, Tri Boyd, Trey Boyd, Jacob Nguyen, and Dakota Snyder, in recognition and appreciation of their accomplishments. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this twenty-fifth day of March twenty fourteen. I'd like the principal and the wrestlers and the coaches to come forward, please.
I'd make the motion that we adopt the resolution.
I'll second. All in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose side. I'd like to commend these young men. And I mean, let's give them a round of applause for all their confidence. They've made us proud here in With County. I'd like to present this to the coach. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I have each one, resolution for each one of y'all. And again, thank you and congratulations for your confidence. Thank you. The next resolution I'll read is With County Resolution twenty fourteen dash oh four, a recognition honoring the George With High School Wrestling Team. Whereas the George With High School Wrestling Team competed, completed a very successful season. And whereas the George With High School Wrestling Team placed third in the Virginia High School League Group One A State Championship. And whereas the George With High School had two wrestlers who won state championships in their weight classes. And whereas wrestler Jake Lewis, a hundred and sixty pound weight class, and David Smith, a hundred and ninety-five pound weight class, was individual state champions. And whereas the wrestlers and coaches of the George With High School Wrestling Team, through their outstanding display of athletic ability, team play, and sportsmanship, have reflected great credit upon the school and upon the entire county. And whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commend state champion Jake Lewis and David Smith and the entire coaching staff for outstanding twenty fourteen season. Therefore be it resolved that this resolution be presented to Jake Lewis, David Smith, and the George With High School Wrestling Team in recognition of their, and appreciation of their accomplishments. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this twenty-fifth day of March twenty fourteen. Do I have a motion? Have a mo- a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Resolution passes.
Are they here?
Yeah. Would the two wrestlers come up from George With? Coach is here. This, and here's one, three twenty y'all. Turn around. Thanks again for your confidence. Next, I'm gonna ask Mr. Willis to read a resolution.
With County Resolution twenty four, twenty fourteen oh five, a resolution honoring Meredith of the George With High School Indoor Track and Field Team. Whereas the George With High School Indoor Track and Field Team completed a very successful season. And whereas several members of the George With High Indoor Track and Field Team advanced to compete in the Virginia High School League Group One A, Two A State Championship. And whereas Meredith Willis competed in four events and defeated all other competitors to become the state champion in the fifty-five meter dash, three hundred meter dash, long jump, triple jump. And whereas Meredith Willis of George With High School Indoor Track and Field Team, through her outstanding display of athletic ability and sportsmanship, have reflected great credit upon the school and upon the entire county. And whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends Meredith Willis for her outstanding accomplishment in indoor track and field. Now therefore be it resolved that this resolution be presented to Meredith in recognition of her four state championship titles. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this twenty-fifth day of March twenty fourteen. Meredith and coach, come up.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Give Meredith a big hand. This is a great accomplishment, and I want to thank Meredith and thank you for making With County proud.
Yeah, thanks for winning.
Yeah, thanks for winning. Have one more resolution. With County Resolution twenty fourteen dash oh six, a resolution honoring Matthew Farmer of Royal Retreat High School Indoor Track and Field Team. Whereas the Royal Retreat High School Indoor Track and Field Team completed a very successful season. And whereas several members of the Royal Retreat High School Indoor Track and Field Team advanced to complete, compete in the Virginia High School League Group One A slash Two A State Championship. And there, there, whereas Matthew Farmer defeated all other competitors to become the state champion in the sixteen hundred meter run. And whereas Matthew Farmer of the Royal Retreat High School Indoor Track and Field Team, through his outstanding display of athletic ability and sportsmanship, have reflected great credit upon the school and upon the entire county. And whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commend Matthew Farmer for his outstanding accomplishments in indoor track and field. Therefore be it resolved that this resolution be presented to Matthew Farmer in a, in recognition of his state championship title. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this twenty-fifth day of March twenty fourteen.
I will make a motion that we adopt that.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Again, let's give Matthew a hand. Thank you for your confidence and making With County proud. Thank y'all. Thank you again. Okay, we'll move on back into the agenda with citizens time. We have two people signed up. Ms. Myers has two subjects to speak on. Come forward, Ms. Myers.
I, I have a question. I've recently become aware that property's been procured on Sand Mountain to facilitate a cell phone service, a tower. And I was wondering if permits had been issued and what the timeline was for the, this to happen.
I have no idea if any permits has been issued yet. This is news to me. Mr. Dalton, you have any information?
I do not. I know that there's been applications made and once that happens, it'd be public information.
Okay. And then I'd like to know if you guys have made any dates for town hall meetings around the county. The public would really, a lot of them can't get here when you do. And town hall meetings in different areas of the county would be much appreciated. So I'd like you to put that on your agendas for, for people. We'd spoken about it before in the past and it didn't happen. And let's turn over a new page.
I would inform you, me and Mr. Hale, on Mondays before the board meetings does mean that we are at Max Meadows Rooting Club Building.
Oh, I haven't seen any, any advertising of that. Perhaps you should put it in the paper or something like that.
Okay.
Or Danny G., so people know. That would be great. Thank you.
Next person on citizens time is Matthew Summers.
Matthew Summers from six oh one Chert Street, Royal Retreat. Just like to comment on the rescue squad issue. It's my understanding there's going to be a plan of action presented to the Board of Supervisors regarding this whole issue with the rescue squad that none of us liked, it's been going on. When, when you're looking at a new adventure of any sort, you look to somebody that has experience in doing whatever you're looking at doing, you know, somebody that's been successful at it. And I thought about picking on Artie, but he's not here today, since he's one of the youngest members of the board here. And I, and I thought about, you know, let's, don't make fun of him, because I'm just using this as an illustration. Let's, let's, just for pretend, if, if he's just a youngster growing up and he's living in a family that just paycheck to paycheck and just barely getting by. But he has this rich uncle that's been successful in business and he's like, you know, I want to be a successful businessman someday. You know, he's not going to go to his dad that's living paycheck to paycheck, you know, how do you be a successful businessman? He's gonna go to his uncle and say, you know, what does it take to be a successful businessman? Because he's obviously done it. You know, he's got the experience. And so I would just throw this out for y'all to keep in mind, you know, the, the person that's, that's going to be talking about what to do with this whole issue with the rescue squad. I've worked alongside him for a couple of years now. I've been in EMS for eight, nine years now. And I've, I've heard the, the plan of action that he's, wants to present and seems to be a very comprehensive plan. He's obviously got the experience to know that this can be implemented and implemented properly, it will work. So with that being said, successful experience speaks volumes. And so I would highly recommend that you consider it very carefully. I would hate it like any one of us to see a, a very major rescue squad agency go down in this county, because we by far run a majority of the rescue calls that come into the With, With County Dispatch Center. And it would definitely put a hurtin' on our citizens to let that go by the wayside. And I, I know in the laws of Virginia, rescue squads are not quote, recognized as a essential service. But I think here in With County, it is very essential to the citizens of our county. So just as a citizen, as a member of With County Rescue Squad, just keep that in mind and I would really appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
That's all that signed up for citizens time. Anyone come in late that didn't have a chance to sign up? If not, a closed citizens time. Move on with the agenda. We have the minutes of the previous meeting on March eleventh, twenty fourteen.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. I do a roll call vote. Mr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Motion passes. Next order on the agenda, it's payment of invoices. I'll second. Have a motion and a second to pay the invoices during invoice. Any board member would like to discuss. Here none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And chair votes aye. Motion passes. Moving on with the agenda, we move down to all business. Do we have any all business, Mr.?
No, sir, I do not have.
Mr. Dalton? Have any, any other business under all business? Here none. We'll go into reports. Mr. Crockett, Sam, you'll give the prejudice report.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
On our consolidated account report, we currently have fifty-one million, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in all of our different accounts. And on our general fund balance, we have thirty-three million, sixteen thousand dollars in general fund. Collections this month, our total collections on the local taxes that we send out stand at seventeen million, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. This month, we took in about two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in delinquent tax. Bulk of that was real estate. We took in a hundred and twenty-six thousand in real estate, ninety-three thousand in personal property. We normally this time of the year, we're pretty busy collecting delinquent taxes when we do our stickers, and we're waiting to see what's going to happen with that. We got, printed our second notices for real estate, personal property yesterday. We're sending out a little over six thousand delinquent notices for personal property and it's about eight hundred thousand dollars. So it's quite a bit, hopefully bring it on in. But we're putting a notice in there about the DMV stops and we put a line in there about the fees, how much it's going to cost to do that. So hopefully that'll stir some, come on, hit and pay. So we'll see. But anybody got any questions?
Any questions for Sam?
Thank you, Sam.
Yes, Sam, could, on that, could you work with the PIO and get a article in the paper about those fees and things and delinquent taxes?
Okay, moving on with agenda, we have fire and rescue committee report. Have anything from fire and rescue?
I don't have the, excuse me, the, the motion written up, but yesterday at a fire and rescue committee meeting, we made the motion to explore, you know, RFPs for emergency services in, in With County. And what that is, is to, you know, seek some bids and proposals from, if you will, commercial companies to, to cover, you know, cover any areas that we need covered, that may not be covered by, you know, by another squad. And that is just, what we're seeking is just to be able to, to send out requests for, for proposals.
Okay, come from the committee, it doesn't need a second. I'll do a roll call vote. Gene?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
We have with us the rescue, With County Rescue Squad. I sent an email out yesterday, they'd like to give some update on where they're at, I believe. Or maybe not?
We did.
Okay. If whoever's going to speak in With County Rescue wants to come forward, please give your name and address.
I will do that. My name is James Reynolds, Jr., EMT with With County Rescue Squad. I live in Royal Retreat, two thirty-nine Wider Way. We had a meeting this past Saturday morning to discuss future agenda, where we're going with our squad. And we was, Luke, me, Luke, and Mr. St. John, the other board members, we decided we was going to go with the county's proposal of going under y'all's umbrella. And then Mr. Christman here come up with a business plan. And it sounds like it's a, it's a pretty good business plan. It might keep our heads up out of water. It'll take a lot of discipline, and I feel like it'll work. So we took a vote, we unanimously decided to go with Mr. Christman's business proposal. And me personally, I feel like it did work. I'd like to introduce you, paramedic, James Christman. April first, JD will step down as executive director with County Rescue Squad. James Christman will be filling in. He, he'll be taking action on the first.
Okay, gentlemen, first let me introduce myself to the ones of you that don't know me, Gene of course does, and give you some background as to what, what may or may not in your mind qualify me for this task. I've been in fire and rescue for twenty years. I've been in rescue management eighteen of those years. I've operated my own business successfully for fifteen years prior to taking a paramedic's position here at With County Rescue. That being said, within any business venture, I believe there are certain things that have to be involved for success. You got to have communication. I realize between this body and our rescue squad, from all the things that have been going on, there's been a total lack of communication, apparently. I ain't going to speak to what may or may not have caused that. I will only say that in the future, you will know what we know, as we know. I request to come and do monthly updates to this body and this forum, to let you know what we're doing and how we're doing it. Also, you have to have accountability within an organization. Accountability means that everybody is going in the same direction and that anybody or anything that is causing problems is eliminated from that direction. Within our own staff members, we, in that meeting that we took Saturday, all of our staff members were on hand except one and expressed their willingness to abide with what we're doing. So everybody is going to be held accountable for their actions or enactions, as the case may be. Structure is also a critical component of any kind of a business venture, rescue, fire, whatever. We will have a structure within our organization. Now, one of the things with communication is misunderstanding. You gentlemen have a misunderstanding about the structure of With County Rescue. All decisions made by the agency are made by the board. The employees, no power there. There are no volunteer membership to have any votes. All votes are made by the board. Now, as in my new position and the staff, we will make recommendations to that board, and then it will be up to that board to make those decisions. Also, public perception, as you guys know, is critical to the success of a fire rescue organization. I have a intense problem with saying that we have a body of any number of volunteers. The plan that we could go to twelve hours a day and run volunteer crews is absolutely not feasible. And the reason being is because we have no volunteers. We have a bunch of young people who are going to be a great asset soon, one day. But right now, they are nothing but young people who come down there and clean and do that type thing. Only one of them is qualified to do anything as far as rescue oriented, and he's an EVOP driver. Now, when the media reports that we have all these volunteers, public perception immediately says, well, if you've got all these volunteers, why can't you, you know, do better? Well, the reason being because those volunteers can't get out there and run calls and do better. So misunderstanding is, is a hard thing for us to overcome. Now, within our structure and you guys, keeping you informed as to how those things progress, because some of our, our things that we're going to do are going to take several months to start showing up on paper. And we're going to need your patience while that's going on. I'll get into some more of that here in just a minute. But we're going to have structure, gentlemen. We're going to have accountability, and we're going to have communication, not only amongst ourselves, but with you and everybody else that is involved in trying to keep the citizens of With County safe. Now, our business plan, as they call it, and Matt built me up so bad, I've got a performance issue here. Our plan is based on three simple, but hard steps. Our plan is based on three simple, but hard steps. Step one is budget cutting and waste cutting. Now, we have identified several areas within our own budget where there is waste and there is over expenditure. We are going to be addressing those things. One of the things that we're going to do within our structure to try to compensate these things is we're going to have individual employees take on additional responsibility. For example, we'll have a training officer, we'll have a supply officer, we'll have a medical officer, we will have a quality management person. These people, their responsibilities will help us save money and do our second part of our business plan, which is to increase revenue. We can't increase our revenues if our billing is not being done properly. So we're going to have to ensure that calls are uploaded in a timely fashion, reviewed, and then sent to the billing company. After that, JD and myself are going to hold the billing company's feet to the fire to do what they're supposed to do. The third part of our business plan is training, within ourselves and within our young volunteers, to get them to where they can run calls, thereby increasing our chances at revenue. Now, I'd be glad to sit down with you gentlemen in another forum and discuss specifics of this plan, but in, you know, in a manner of time, we'll just do a brief overview and give you monthly updates if that is acceptable to you. We have some requests of y'all. We request that you leave our funding in place so that we can get off on the right foot with this thing. Also, we request your participation in this. As you well know, we're two members on our board short. We would like those two members to come from y'all's recommendations. That gives you input and also gives us a full board. This also will show the public that we are interacting with you, and you're interacting with us, and rebuild the confidence that we lost. I know, right now, we have a fiasco of public relations. We have to fix that first within here, and within here, and within there. Those are the things that we are going to immediately start on. I'm going to give you one example of where we have already acted, will become implemented in the first week of April, that will save us almost a thousand dollars a month. In saying this, let me just put it to you that this plan that we're doing has no effect or rec, dispersion to JD's efforts. JD did an outstanding job under terrible circumstances. One of the things that I always felt was a waste was to have a board of director, I mean, a director who sits in an office and gets paid a separate salary. So as the director, I'm staying on the truck for my individual shifts, which I did yesterday, and JD's going on a truck also. He will still be in the office 16 hours a week, but he'll be on the truck 24 hours a week, and that will save us approximately between 950 to a thousand dollars a month, just by that one simple thing. We saved a thousand dollars a month. That's just one example of cutting costs within our own budget to try to make this thing happen. I have never taken on a task that is as extensive as this one is going to be, but I have confidence with that, with your participation and help, and their participation and help, that we can make this happen. Now, I'll open the floor to questions.
One, Mr. Christman, one, one thing that you, you said just a little ago, you said that you really have no volunteers.
Right.
And so you're using all paid people.
Absolutely.
And, and when I, when I ask this, I'm, I'm just asking it, you know, for clarification. If you all have paid staff and, of course, charging for services, and you're doing that 24 hours a day, how, how does that make you different from a commercial company like Guardian or Life Care?
Well, right now, we aren't different because we don't have volunteer staff. Our, our hope in the future is to bring volunteer staff back into the fold, if you will, and put them out there for second calls and for possibly some transports out of the ER, back to the nursing homes, because that's good revenue there. To, in order for us to operate 24/7, which is what, with 2,500 calls, you, you all know the numbers for the call volume, it's, it's not feasible or, in my mind, healthy for this community to be run on a 12-hour, paid 12-hour volunteer staff, because if in point of fact, you, you have a call, say, during the volunteer time, and there is no volunteers, which we don't have any, of the nearest agency, let's just use your, your agency, rural retreat, and say the call's down here at the top of Big Walker Mountain, Stony Fork. By the time rural retreat gets there, somebody's health is really compromised. Our only objective in doing this, there are two of them, to save the jobs of myself and our other employees, and to continue as long as we possibly can, providing 24/7 coverage for these folks in With County. Now, I've been here from the very first day that this place went paid. I was the first employee appointed by With County Rescue as a paid staffer. I have passion, these people here know me around this town and around this county, because I've been here for nine years. It is, in my mind, imperative that we keep operating 24/7. If we don't, somebody will suffer, and that's not going to be a good thing. Now, granted, in some circles, you know, that may be acceptable, but for us, it's not. We're going to continue to strive as long as we possibly can to keep going 24/7. Our hope is, as we train our volunteer staff, they will be able to come in, and I don't ever foresee a time when there can't be a 24-hour paid, paid staff, even at a volunteer rescue squad, because the, the times that are gone, as a 20-year, Gene knows this thing, as a 20-year veteran of this thing, my own agency is facing the same dilemmas. Volunteerism has slowed, the ones of us that've been doing it have gotten white hair, we've slowed, and it is hard to get young people who are not motivated towards their own career challenges and those things, to put the kind of time and dedication into this that it would take for a volunteer agency to survive. Does that kind of roundabout answer your question?
Well, yes and no, I guess. I, you know, the, the hard thing, you know, for me is I know that one, the reason that the county makes donations to, you know, to rescue squads, to fire departments, is because of the volunteer program. You know, because as volunteers, you know, the, you know, the county feels that, you know, we need to, we need to endorse that, we need to, to support that. But, you know, and I know that, I don't think that the county gave any money to, to rescue squads until like back in the early 90s or maybe late 80s or, or something like that. But again, you know, because of volunteer status. I, you know, it's a little bit, it's a little bit of a strange situation when you say, you know, you're completely, you know, paid, and, you know, you're not under the control of With County government. I know that there's a misconception about the name, but certainly in 1948, With County Rescue was the only rescue squad. But, you know, you, basically, we are, right now, looking at putting, you know, taxpayer money into, into a commercial company, as it stands right now, and, you know.
You are on the caveat that we will, as, we're going to be having a recruitment program. It's going to be tough because we're going, it's going to be hard to get qualified. The one thing that I found interesting about the lead mine situation was, Lead Mines Rescue had a bulk of qualified volunteers. They had a, you know, they had a bunch of qualified EMTs and drivers and ALS providers that came back when, when, when the reorganization happened. And that was a wonderful thing, and we hope to be in that position ourselves at some point, but we're not there yet. And until we do get to that point, we're going to have to keep paying people 24/7. Not to say that we won't change in the future, if we get to the point we can, but for right now, we can, and perform our obligation to the community.
That's, that's all I have, Mr. Gene.
Are there, are there rescue squads in Virginia that are paid and volunteer?
Yes, sir, they sure are. For example, Independence Rescue. At this point in time, Damascus Rescue. Damascus Rescue is in, at this point in time, filling any shifts that are not filled with volunteers with contract labor staff, thereby trying to fill in the mandated 724 coverage. Now, if and when the time comes, and we can comfortably do that, we can do that.
Right.
But at this point in time, that's not a, that's not an option for us because of our circumstances.
I, I understand that, I, I just wondered if there was anybody that was, that they could make it work between the paid and the volunteer?
There's still, there's still lots of them doing it.
Because I mean, you know, you know, like I do, I mean, there's, there can be conflict there.
Right. There, and, and usually are. And there again, if everybody is not striving for the same mission statement, you and I have talked about this before, the mission statement is to protect the citizenry. And if they're not, everybody is not applying to that mission statement, then there's problems. Did that?
Yeah.
Steve, do you have any questions?
Got a business question, and I'm not on Fire and Rescue, but one of the things I've read, and I don't believe everything I read in the press, you guys use a billing company?
We do.
Send out invoices?
We do.
How are you doing on collections?
I asked JD, and we're running it around at 63%. But one of our problems with collections is, and, and not speaking completely offhandedly, there is a process that has to be done. The providers have the responsibility to make sure their paperwork is acceptable to be billed. That's the first part. It has to be timely uploaded to where the billing company can get it in a timely fashion. And then the billing company has to be timely in order to keep revenue flowing. What we've had in the past, we've had computer glitches, and we've had employee glitches that have resulted in calls not being adequately uploaded to the billing company, which causes a gap in revenue, and we can't have that. Now, that's one of the things that we are, we have already instructed the employees, and JD and myself will do the other part, as to make sure that there are no gaps in revenue. It, it'll be a learning curve for me, because I, I haven't done it on the scale that we do it here. I have done it, and I know the procedure. But everybody has to be accountable for their own end of the, of the thing in order to keep the revenue flowing and the cash flow going, and that's a critical part of our plan.
67% is probably killing you. Have you set a goal on where you'd like to be six months from now?
Oh, yes. Yes, we want to get to 80%.
Okay.
But that may be a hard thing to do.
I mean, you're doing the work, you need to be compensated for it.
Now, one of the, one of our problems, as you've heard this thing entirely, and I mean, I know you've been beat to death with this, the government, we have no control over Medicare or Medicaid, of course. The government's going to do what the government's going to do. Now, we could send a bill for $10,000 to Medicare, and they could say, well, you're going to get $200. That's all you're going to get, and that's, they have the privy to do that. So that's a problem for us. But what, what JD and I, and the board, and the members talked about was, if we can control the things we can control, then we make our odds of success better. We can't control the federal government, we can't control the state government, we can't even control this government. But what we can do is control our own actions, and that's, that's where we're, that's where we're at as to trying to increase our revenues. We're also going to go back to the old days. These young folks that can't run on calls now, they can help with fundraisers, and we are going to get back into the fundraising business, because we have to increase our revenues in order to be able to make the bottom line work. So we're going back to, Gene remembers the day when all of us old guys said, we got what we got by selling hot dogs. Well, we're going back to that, to a degree. Our number one thing will always be billing, because that's where the bulk of our budget comes from. But we are still going to be out there beating the bushes for any handouts we can get, and we're still going to be out, doing other things to try and to, that's phase two of our program, is to increase revenue. And if we can't decrease cost and increase revenue, we're going to have the same problem we have right now, we're going to have a shortage. So I'm not going to stand here and tell you guys this is a guarantee, because there is no guarantees. But I will tell you this, if we don't do it, it can't be done. That I'll guarantee.
Thanks. You come, I'm going to ask some questions here.
Alright.
You come, you come, the rescue squad come to us over a week ago and said you was going to shut down. You couldn't make it. Explain to me what has changed since then.
Okay. Within our own agency, and I'll be perfectly blunt with you, because that's the way I am, I, I like it out there on the cuff, that was a mistake. That motion, that, second of that motion, that resolution, that whole thing was a mistake. But it was done. Now, within our organization, yeah, there was insecurity. There was an atmosphere of shut up and do your job. So suggestions were not available. These suggestions that I just gave you were not available.
Okay, you made, you said you was going to cut, I'm looking, about $1,000 to $1,800. How, how are you going to pay you, you weren't in Wisconsin, your insurance?
Well, see.
Your, your vehicle insurance.
That's just the first cut. And as I told you, now, this is going to be a patience thing. We have, we have, we still have revenue coming in. It ain't like we ain't got revenue. Billing comes in all the time. We just don't know when and where it's coming from.
But if, if you couldn't make your payroll, and you couldn't pay your bills two weeks ago, how can you pay them now?
Well, by, uh...
I mean, explain, explain to us how you can go from one extreme to another extreme.
I don't think we were at that extreme.
How can you pay, how can you pay your bills?
The truth of the matter is, I don't think we were at that extreme. And that's the truth. I think that the situation was bad, but it was not critical. Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, it was, it was brought to the board, to the Fire and Rescue Committee, that you was in a critical, a dire situation, that you could not run any longer, that you couldn't make your payments, that...
There has been, and this I've been made aware of, there has been some, we have a line of credit, and they've used that line of credit. Now, as I said, the particulars of this business plan... Now, as I said, the particulars of this business plan are more extensive than just $1,000.
Well, I mean, elaborate, I mean, I mean, I read your minutes. I mean, you're talking about selling vehicles.
A vehicle.
It's two in there. I've heard you wanting to charge lead mines for running calls.
Right. Any other localities around here, in the other localities around here? For example, Galax Grayson Amulet Service. If they, they're the mutual aid for all the Grayson County volunteer agencies. If they come out to assist one of those volunteer agencies, those volunteer agencies give them $100, $150 fee to cover their equipment. You know, because you, when you go out there, you use up equipment. Business is really and truly, if you, you're all businessmen or you wouldn't be where you are. You have a head for business. If you, if you use assets, you're gonna have to at some point replace them. So, what you were talking about with the minutes, those trucks that we have are sitting there, and they're not doing nothing. The day when Riff County Rescue can get four trucks out, I don't even know if it ever existed, but it don't exist now. So, if we have four trucks sitting there, fully stocked to the state recommendation for licensure, we're paying maintenance, we're paying expense, insurance, and stocking of those vehicles, which to me is an extreme waste. If we can't get it out there, it's a waste. So, by cutting those costs, it puts more into the general fund, into the bottom line. Now, granted, that's gonna take some time because we, first, number first, we gotta get them off the list. Now, what does that do for us? All right, let's, let's look at it like this. It takes $6,000 to stock an ambulance per the state mandated requirements. So, we have an ambulance there that is sitting out there with $6,000 worth of stock in it. Now, that, that truck never leaves the building. All medical supplies have expiration dates on them. So, you spend the money upfront to put that $6,000 worth of equipment on a truck, and that stuff sits there till it expires, and you throw it away and you do it again. That's part of the, that's, that's the nature of the beast. So, the plan is to eliminate that waste and get that stock back into the supply system where it will be used. Now, granted, that's not gonna come into an instant savings, but it will. It will generate it. Now, getting it off the insurance will generate an instant savings. We have, before this business plan ever took, took place, the rescue squad sold two pieces of equipment that were not being used, and they felt like were being weighted down with. So, in point of fact, and I'll give you another example of waste. There's a 70, I don't know what model it is, but there's a 1970 something model suburban ambulance over there. It's a classic. It was one of Wick County's old units. It sits in that building, and all it is is nostalgia. But it is nostalgia, and it is a representative of our past. But it's insured at $90,000. That's a waste. Those are the things that we are targeting. Those wasteful things that add to our bottom line to the point where we can't make it. For the first month, two months, thereabouts, whatever, until we can get these things under control, and it's gonna be tough. There's no question, it will be. That's why I ask you to leave our fuel in place. And that way, we don't have to budget for that. Now, I'm not standing here asking you for the 10 grand. That was, the, the $10,000 that was motioned for in the previous minute meeting, if you feel like you can and want to, to help us out, that would be wonderful. But if you feel like you can't, that's okay. We'll, we'll try to swallow it as best we can. In a period, over a period of time, and part of the monthly updates I were gonna bring you would be numbers showing you where our savings are. Like, for example, how much did we save by cutting that vehicle and that's, that, that insurance? Those will be real numbers, and you will understand those numbers. But those for, those are numbers are for the future. Right now, the plan is just a plan because it hasn't been implemented.
Well, let me, let me go back to the one thing about, that I saw in the minutes as well as Mr. Reeves about charging lead mines, you know, $150. I'm, I'm just here right now to tell you that, that's not gonna, that won't work. It's not gonna happen. I'll explain why. One is you have a mutual aid agreement, you know, with Lead Mines doesn't mention anything about $150. Plus, I didn't understand exactly why you, you mentioned Lead Mines and not roll retreat because sometimes there may be a rollover call to, to roll retreat. Yeah, the second thing is, you know, I, I hope that you all understand this, and that is that, you know, we decide, you know, service areas and, and who is, who is the second call. And I, you know, again, no disrespect, but it's just as easy for dispatch, to dispatch guardian from Withfield as it is you all, and.
Rollover calls are not, are not what we're talking about. And even furthermore, if it's a rollover call, we're not going to meet them. We're going to pick a patient up. We will bill for that call, so there's no, that doesn't even enter into that.
Okay, then I'm, I'm misunderstanding what you were talking about $150 for.
The $150 is when we go to Austinsville to meet a Lead Mines unit to provide ALS for that unit. Now, that is not set in stone. That's just the way the other localities do it.
You're, you're talking about across the county line, though?
Yes, and other, other, other localities. That's what, that's how they make it. That's how they get their, that's the, the plan that they use in order to be able to perform the service they perform. It, nothing is non-negotiable. Nothing is set in stone. Those me, those were ideals that we had, just like you have ideals back there that you don't bring out here because you talk about them and they're not appropriate.
Well, that, I will just say upfront, that's, that's one idea that, you know, will not work.
Okay. Well, I mean, that, that's why we want your input on this thing, is we want to work with you. You're the governing body. They're the governing body of a rescue. You're the governing body of the county. We have to work within your confines. And we have to, for the public's sake, interact and work together to make this thing happen if we can.
Okay, you're also talking about increasing, 6% increase to the citizens of the coverage area.
Well, no, that was a 6% increase of the billing across the, across the range. In other words, that was Keith, our board member, Keith St. John's suggestion. For example, we, if we bill $600 to Blue Cross and Blue Shield, we would bill $636 to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. The citizens are still gonna have the same that they've always had. Now, there is, there are some things in that, those meetings, minutes, that we haven't implemented because we're still in the discussion phases, phases of those things. They haven't been motioned, they haven't been, nothing, they're just discussion. For example, the hard billing aspect of it. That, none of that has been done. That's still in discussion stages. Personally, I don't want that to be done. But there again, the board makes those decisions and I don't. I'm old school, and when we started these years ago, when Rescue Squad saw the need to start billing insurances to help make their bottom line, nobody wanted to make their patients suffer. The whole, the whole concept of soft billing was to put those, not put those people in such a financial hardship that they couldn't even make their own obligations as far as home, health, heat, food, in order to pay an ambulance right. The insurance companies can afford those things, as you well know. And that was what that 6% was.
Okay, you know, the Fire and Rescue Committee, the board sent you a set of bylaws that, what was the reason behind not accepting our suggestion?
Okay.
To adopt the bylaw?
Because the way the structure is set up, we have no captain, first lieutenant, second lieutenant, and all those things. We have a, we have a board, a governing board, and we have no other officers except for stuff that I'm gonna tell these guys they have to do within the confines of their job. There was also in there classification of membership. Right now, we have none of that. We have no members. So, it wa, it didn't fit our, the program.
You're saying right there that you're not a resc, I mean, you're not a volunteer rescue squad now?
Right. We, that's where we're trying to get back to, but we're not right now. That's our hope, is to get back to that, that structure with the volunteers, but we're not right now. We have none. We have auxiliary members, those young people that are so great to come down there and help us lift and pull and tug and clean. But as far as, say, those are for the future. We want to get back to volunteer staff, where we have staff members that are volunteers that can go out and run calls. But we just aren't there right now.
You know, the citizens of this county is paid for all that equipment down there. I mean, through donations, through billing.
That's exactly right.
And, and everything.
That's exactly right.
And, and to see, you know, the equipment start being sold off just because you have to make payroll, or you have to pay insurance, or you have to pay weren't missed call, you know, don't seem right to me when, when we offered you a set of bylaws to turn the vehicles over to us, which we can save thousands of dollars on insurance a year.
I came into this thing at a, at an inopportune time. And apparently, and I'm, I'm not wanting to speak critically, but there's no communication between y'all and, and this board in a, in a fashion that would fashion, this board, your, the bylaws that you sent were not appropriate for the structure right now. But we could have amended all that had we had discussion, or y'all and them could have had discussion, I guess I should say, because they're the governing body. They could have came and told you that we didn't have the things in there that, that those bylaws opted to. Hopefully, we will, but we don't right now. They could, they're, they're, that's the discussion and communication.
Is that structure about the way all rescue squads is run by a captain, lieutenant, sergeant?
It is absolutely the structure.
Why does Withfield County wanna be different?
When they, three year, what was it, three years ago? When they went to a fully paid staff three years ago, 24/7, they went with, and their board, went with a moving away of those ways and had an executive director. Now, every other rescue squad that I'm aware of still adheres to a set of bylaws, just like the ones you sent us. My own agency does. I'm the captain of that agency. This agency opted three years ago to go to a different structure. I don't, I can't speak to why they did that. Jamie might can, but I can't.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask our legal counsel a question? Mr. Farthing, as far as us being a governmental body and, and now with Candy Rescue, basically a, a, a commercial entity, are we restricted as to what our, our, you know, funding or donation, or?
I think they're still a nonprofit agency. They still have their 401.
Okay, so by that.
Right. I mean, IRS guidelines, I think they're still a nonprofit agency.
We are.
You know, they're, they haven't switched to a profit base that I'm aware of, but I don't know a lot about what's going on with their management. So, they're still a nonprofit. You've still, at some point in the past, given them permission to operate within a certain area of the county. So, they're still operating under that permission at this time. So, as far as them being a paid service, I mean, the other rescue squads in the county are, have paid employees. They also have volunteers there. I think you just have to look at what is the organization, and are they still a volunteer rescue squad or not? If they don't have any members, you know, I'm not, I have to look that up to figure that out.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Dahl, do you have any questions?
Not really. I guess the only comment I'd have is that the $10,000 you mentioned previously was contentious upon certain things happening. And the county has spent part of that, and I guess unless the board decides differently that what we have spent, we're probably sending a bill for recovery of that.
And that was part of our discussion yesterday.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Once again, we are short two members, and we would like for the, for the board to appoint two members to our board if you feel that you can do.
So, you will have a four-member board?
Five. We have three right now.
Who, who's the third?
Keith St. John, Luke Lambert, and Mr. Reynolds.
Did, we have a letter of resignation from Mr. St. John. It's in our email.
Really? Okay, I was not aware that Mr. St. John said that.
Yeah, June.
Oh, first of June. Okay, well, I wasn't aware of that.
He gives.
Okay, three members.
I'm gonna ask this question, and y'all may not know the answer. What was the, the finances of the squad five or six years ago?
I can't answer to that.
Mr. Reynolds?
I was, I was here as a 12-hour employee at that time, but I, I don't know.
Were you there, Luke? I mean, you had a $100,000 three years ago?
No, five, five or six years ago.
Five or six years ago? I have no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll go back into reports. Budget Committee, Mr. Housman?
I, I wasn't, I wasn't able to attend that, but I'll be glad to read this. You know, at its March 20th, 2014 meeting, the Budget Committee recommended amending and appropriating $428,256.81 as a CSA supplement with all funding being staked.
Okay, you have a motion from the Budget Committee, doesn't need a second. Any discussion? Here none, I do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne? And Chair votes aye. Water Committee report.
Well, I was gonna say, actually, I wasn't there, so when y'all want it.
We were two, school was two hours late that day, so.
I'll do it, okay. The Water Committee met on March 18th, 2014 and made the following recommendations. One, to amend and appropriate $35,800 to 4402-46046 for wastewater pump maintenance and repairs. It's just to the point that there are some, some pumps that need to be refurbished, that need to be repaired to keep everything going, and that's the amount that it takes.
Okay, we'll take these one at a time. Come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any discussion? Here none, do a roll call vote. Mr. Housman?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes aye.
Second was to accept the bond cancel proposal from Spielman, Thomas, and Battle for the Kitchen, Wilkinson, Nixon Roads water extension project, and the firm guarantees the fee not to exceed $4,800. And that was somewhere between, what was it, quarter, three, $4,000 less than the next one. So, this was the lowest bid, if you will.
Okay, again, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any discussion? I do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. And the Chair votes aye.
And number three, this is actually kind of a, a new thing. Certainly. And number three, this is actually kind of a, a new thing, and certainly was a, a new thing for me to listen to, to proceed with the Internoc Demand Response Program Proposal, provided favorable contract review by the county attorney, and options being discussed with AEP. Basically, what this is, this Internoc is a, an agency that monitors electrical usage. And during peak times, they will contact, you know, water wastewater to let them know that, you know, peak time is coming up, and so that we can run on generators for, you know, it may be, you know, four hours. And what that does then is it saves AEP, it saves, you know, us, and we get paid by this Internoc, you know, company for, for doing that. And of course, it's not just with us, they do it with a lot of, a lot of agencies and a lot of companies around. And it really is to, to save high electrical cost at, at peak times. They're talking about, like, it wouldn't be over maybe, you know, twice a year. They have, and I, I, all that information is in your, is in your, in your packet, and you can look at it. But basically, it's, it's a savings for us if we do that, and it seems to be a logical thing to do because we have to run generators anyway. Really, it didn't, doesn't look like there's a downside, but we want to, to pursue that again with the stipulation that after Mr. Farthing reviews the contract and we talk with AEP, if all of it's favorable, then we would like to, you know, to go ahead with it.
Okay, again, come from committee, doesn't need a second. Any further discussion? Here none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Housman?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Okay, moving on with reports. County Ministers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is a letter from Matt Rogers Planning District Commission. Mr. William Dixon's term on the Act Commission expires on June 30th, 2014. He is eligible to be reappointed.
Can I have a, excuse me, I can't, what's his name? I can't try to find it.
William Dixon.
William Dixon. Okay. I have a, a motion to reappoint Mr. Dixon.
Is he willing to?
Yes.
Then I will make that motion.
Have a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor is saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion passes, reappointed.
The next item is a program that the General Assembly has approved through legislation in 2011. It's a Virginia Tourism Development Financing Program. It's basically a gap financing, pretty easy reading. Couple of things that are required. Number one, us developing the ordinance. I included a copy of one that I found in Sponce Bay in the county. I recommend that we pass this along to the county attorney and see if he can draft up an ordinance that the Budget Committee could review in the future.
Okay, I have a motion that we pass this to the county attorney. We need a motion, just by consensus. Have a motion to.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Have a second.
Okay.
All in favors submitting this to the county attorney to prepare ordinance, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion passes. Next item.
With regret, we have a letter, a copy of the letter from Sarah Paul, tendering her resignation. Library Board, Mr. Wilfs.
She informed us last week that she is seeking other opportunities in Georgia. The Library Board has met, and we are actively already advertising for her replacement. And she's been great to work with in my limited time, and she's a youth, a lot of you, a lot of information going forward for her replacement.
She'll be missed. We don't need to.
No, sir. The, there will be, as we come through this in budget time, the staff will be presenting, and we've looked at this in the past, whether it's the proper time, since the state really provides no funding or incentives to be a regional library, whether to continue on with their relationship or just fund their online degree. Next item is just a more of an informational item about the Rower Tree Brick Center plans moving forward. The key item is, in the last paragraph, Mr. Wilfs pointed out that it would be a county white project with possible county funding. I'm sure that will be a discussion in a hundred twenty.
Well, I, yeah, I went to the, I will inform, I went to the meeting, and I didn't promise them anything. I said, you know, get a proposal together and present it to the, to us, and, and we'd go from there. They have got a bunch of people together that's, that's looking at this, they're real excited about going forward for this. So I think they really scaled it down from what the, what was it, two years ago? They're just talking about a gym and.
Walking track.
Walking track.
I guess the only comment here is that we're, we're sort of headed a different model with working with the school systems, with the agreement over at Sheffy. If that one works out, potential agreements, Speedwell and Jackson and Rower Tree Elementary are the same type. I guess at some point in time, we've got to decide which model we really want to work on.
And I discussed that model with them.
The next item is a letter from DEQ about a proposed gas generation plan over in Smith County, 700 megawatts, that was somewhere in behind the trailer place, utility trailer. If you want us to make comments to that, but it does have major implications of emissions over there for that gas-fired plant. Mostly it's southwesterly winds, Gary, so it's going to drop on your house.
I'll wear a mask.
What do we need?
If you want us to make comments, we'd be more than happy to send a comment and ask for the full plan and what those emissions are.
I, I would like this simply because, you know, on the western end of the county is going to be affected, if, let me rephrase that, if there is an effect, it will be on the, on the western end of the county.
That's what I was going to say, is, I mean, I'd like to know what the effect is. I mean, they give you some list there, but I mean, unless you know what that stuff does or how much is going to be there.
This is what you got.
Yeah, well, do we need a motion for that, or can we just direct you to do that?
Just, we'll just go ahead and do it right away and ask for a detailed plan of what those emissions are and how they're dealing with it.
Okay.
And I'm assuming that if we have any, any serious questions after that, we could invite someone to come and make a presentation?
Typically, we can ask the company if they're so willing. The Corporation Commission will have a public hearing.
Okay.
And that's usually the format of how.
Okay.
Several years ago, or a lot longer than several, I guess, there was a 700-megawatt plant proposed at Foster Falls, and the, they had a hearing, I think here local, and then they. But we'll dig out our information and ask DEQ, Mr. Gregory, and Alan Newman for that. Mr. Chairman, if I may, I laid on your desk, I had an item to my report, if I may. If not, I'll lay it back down. Six-year plan.
Which one?
There's two there.
The old, the current one.
Which has my signature on it, then.
Thank you.
I'll propose one for next year. Need to set a public hearing date. I originally wanted VDOT asked for the 13th, and they decided they couldn't do it, so May the 27th, either in the morning, if you don't want to do it in the morning, so pick between 10 and 5, or you can do it at 7 and 5 that night.
I think we need to do it at 7 o'clock that night to use the seven since time, if that worked. Does anybody have any problems with setting it at 7 o'clock?
On which day?
May 27th.
May 27th. A drastic reduction in.
It is. It is a huge reductions after all the additional taxes and revenue that they projected have fallen. Appears over 50% less than what they projected.
That would come in?
That it would come in. If you go to the end line, the old plan had 5.3 million, plus or minus, the new plan's 2.9 million. And what that's done is pushed all those projects way back out. My concern is when they handed it to me, were, were the point of taking projects back off the plan again? All the projects are left on the plan, they've assigned some preliminary engineering money to those. And at the bottom of the proposed plan, it also has what it calls, I've written in, non-VDOT, project number 999, 098, R65, 10 million, 827. And that's the revenue sharing project for the project that, that rode out in the Progress Park. So May 27th and 7 o'clock is.
That's, that's fine with me. Coin, Jane, those are two, I have to live with it. Will this have any effect on the improvements that we're doing to the corridor?
No. You will see a new corridor plan. These reductions are state reduction revenue, but the, the corridor is 90-some percent federal money and a little bit of state money, but it does affect the long-term six-year plan for primary interstate roads. The next plan will have C reductions.
Anything further?
No, sir.
Okay, moving on, County Attorney, do you have anything, Mr. Farthing?
I do not.
Board Supervisors' Report, Blackwood District.
The only thing I have is, I guess, not this past Saturday, it was Saturday before last, I had to, I attended a grape side service over at Fairview United Methodist Church going between Retreat and Cedar Springs, and when I went over, I didn't count them, but when I came back, I counted, and there were 37 orange bags. And, yeah, I had no idea that there was, I mean, I, you know, I, I drive that every once in a while, and I guess you just kind of get used to not, not seeing things, but yeah, yeah, Sheriff, I just want to, you know, congratulate you all and, and thank you on, on doing that, because, you know, sometimes you do things and you don't see a result, but when you've got 37 bags laying alongside the road getting ready to pick, you know, be picked up, it's, it's dramatic, so thank you.
Okay. Mr. Wilfs, I'll let you do East and West Whitfield.
On behalf of Whitfield, I'd like to second what, what Gary said. We appreciate the effort. I travel a lot of county roads, and it's, it's in much better shape than when you guys started. And the other thing is from East Whitfield, thanks for the, the resolution for the athletes. That meant a lot to them, especially in our household.
You're welcome. Okay, Fort Chitham's not here. Lead Mines District.
Lead Mines, I had a call from Junior Mayberry, and I give it to Stephen, and he's already sent an email to Jeff Russell about a guard rail. And I also referred that to the sheriff, thank you, cleaning up in my area.
Okay, Jane?
I've had some road requests, but have sent them to VDOT, so other than that, I don't think I've got anything at this time.
Yeah, I also had some road requests, and I called Mr. Russell, and, you know, with all the, the winter weather, the freezing thawing, and the rain, all the gravel roads have got potholes and need scraping and stuff. He informed me that, you know, they'll get to it just as soon as they can get to it, and I think they're, they're doing a pretty good job. That's all I have.
Mr. Chairman. And I should have asked for this earlier, and I know we've got some emails, but can we ask Mr. Dahl just to give us a brief update on Lead Mines?
Okay.
Their, yeah, their license status and that sort of thing?
I have a copy on my desk.
Okay.
Of the pharmacy license. They're in the process of ordering the drugs as soon as the drugs will be here. The ambulance is fully stocked, Mr. Andrew is going to give us a call, and they will be full ALS on that day. It should be less than seven days, I understand.
Great.
That's good.
Okay.
I didn't see your name on the, the agenda, Sheriff, but would you please come up if you have anything?
I don't have anything to report. I did make a request to the Department about budget appropriations. I saw it in your station.
They're on the St. County.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have. Unless you have a question.
No, and again, thank, and thank all the people down there, JB, and I don't know who else. Are they still running three days a week?
Weather permitting.
When weather permitting.
We have had a pretty big issue with that.
Yeah.
I would do that with Brew, so.
But they are doing a good job. I see, I'm driving through the county, and I see orange bags everywhere on, on Saturday evening and Sunday. But that, that's another thing, Mr. Dahl, that, you know, I was going to ask you, your opinion and the board's opinion about sending a letter to the truck stops and things up down to the corridor, that all this trash that's blown and sort of laying around the truck stops, if we could send a letter of request to, to have them to clean up around there?
I don't know if we'll send a letter, we'll make a personal visit with our code enforcement officers, because each one of those western ends appears will have a lot of trash on them, of course, wind's blowing so bad this way. But we will do that.
Thank you.
It won't only be. It won't only be truck stops, it will be
Everything, yeah.
Okay, moving on with the agenda, we have the consent calendar. I have a motion to approve this consent calendar. Have a second.
I'll second.
I'll have a motion and second any item on the consent calendars that any board member would like to discuss. Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 The Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Next order on agenda is Insurance Committee for Recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, the Insurance Committee met. This is a March 11th and reviewed the proposed insurance changes and recommendation is continue offering the Key Advantage 500 and with the Key Advantage Buy Up, Expanded Buy Up Option. Due to the rate increase, the committee further recommends the Board of Supervisors continue, because that didn't say, but 95%, $510.15 of the Key Advantage 500 premium per month, per employee per month. Employees portion of the premium will be 2685, which is $1.95 higher than the current rate that they're paying, with the county picking up the majority of that. Employees will continue to have the option to buy up Key Advantage's expanded plan at their expense.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the recommendations of the Insurance Committee.
I so move.
Second. Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Housman?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The Chair votes aye. Facility Cost Agreement.
Mr. Chairman, this is the members of the board. This is a agreement between County Whitwell, Whitwell County Social Services delineating their, I'm going to call it the lease and use of the building next door. Approval of this will allow us to recover the, through the cost alloc, most of the costs, or some of the costs, the cost allocation plan.
Okay, can I have a motion to accept the facility cost agreement?
I'll move that we accept the facility cost agreement memorandum of understanding.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horne?
Aye.
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 The Chair votes aye. And we're in the understanding, this is passed. Royal Tree Depot Foundation, if I can find this. This is, the Depot Foundation is a 501(c)(3) and they have requested that we waive all fees on building permits and other kind of permits in restoring the old depot and Royal Tree. Can't find it, but that's basically what they're, they're wanting.
They are.
Yeah.
We, and the board can do that for the local fee. There's a little state fee that still has to be collected and passed on.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we, we waive county fees and that's all that we can do.
Have a second. Any further discussion? Here and now, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Housman?
Aye.
Aye.
The Chair votes aye. Okay. Next order on agenda is Resolution 2014-07. Whitfield County Resolution 2014-07 offered March the 25th, 2014. Whereas each budget year, the foremost duty of the, of the Virginia General Assembly is to pass a budget or budget amendments that serve as Virginia financial blueprint for each fiscal year. And whereas Virginia is consistently recognized for its sound fiscal management and budgetary practices as illustrated by its AAA bond rating and the strong bond rating of many local government divisions throughout the Commonwealth. And whereas the Whitfield County Board of Supervisor currently in its, in the process of developing and adopting its budgets for the upcoming fiscal year. And whereas the Whitfield County Board of Supervisor relies on the timely passage of a budget to allocate funding to local government services and make policy and hiring decisions for the upcoming fiscal year. And whereas the residents of Whitfield County depend on the government, county government to provide critical services such as education and public safety. And whereas failure to pass a timely budget will result in unnecessarily for the Whitfield County Board of Supervisors, which receives substantial funding as direct or indirect aid from the Commonwealth. And whereas the Whitfield County School Board relies on the timely passage of a state budget in order to set the budget and make staffing decisions, which includes teachers' contracts. And whereas interruption of the provision of education services to Whitfield County students will have significant negative impact on students and families. And whereas the interruption of public safety services would likely result in loss of property, serious injury, or loss of life for Whitfield County citizens. And whereas critical mental health services to Whitfield County residents are provided via funds that flow from the state budget to county. And whereas the Virginia General Assembly adjourned on Saturday, March the 8th, 2014, without adopting a budget for the two-year millennium beginning July the 1st, 2014. Be it resolved by the Whitfield County Board of Supervisor, that the government of Whitfield County, of Governor of Virginia and the Virginia General Assembly are urged to pass a budget as soon as practicable to en, to ensure the continued functioning of state and local government. Resolve further, resolve further that the issuing of Medicaid expansion, the issue of Medicaid expansion under the Affordable Care Act should be decoupled from the budget negotiation and considered in a separate legislative session to facilitate prompt passage of the state budget. And be it resolved further that the Whitfield County Board of Supervisor shall transmit copies of this resolution to the Honorable Terrence R. McCullough, Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the members of the Virginia General Assembly so that they may be apprised of the census of the Whitfield County Board of Supervisors in this manner, adopted this 25th day of March, 2014.
I will second that. I mean, I'll make the motion that we adopt. I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm getting tired of reading. I'm sorry. I'll make the motion that we adopt this resolution and if somebody else had made the motion, I would have seconded it.
I have a second. I'll second it. All in favor of adopting Resolution 2014-07, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Mr. Dalton, have any other?
Yes, we do. We need to go into closed session and discuss personnel.
Okay, I have a motion to go into closed session.
Yeah.
Wait a minute. Okay, I'll second it. All in favor of going into closed session, say aye. You read the resolution?
Well, we'll read when we come out.
Okay, it's under personnel. We're in closed session.